All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education for Arlington Heights School District 25. Before we begin, I'd just like to share with our audience that our meetings are when the school board conducts its business, and they are open to the public. Because we are an elected governmental body, we can only take action by majority vote in a public meeting like this one. We welcome the public to listen and observe, and we have a community input section on the agenda if you have questions or comments on the business of the board. We now reconvene the meeting after returning the closed session, and I call it to order. And Ms. O'Brien, if you would call a roll, please.
Olanichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Present.
Faso?
Thank you, Lana, and please stand if you're This month, we don't have any recognitions or presentations to make, so we'll go right to our Board Communications. And so this is where I will ask for my colleagues, any updates to share this month. Quiet fall here in District 25. Oh, Anisha, go ahead.
No, thank you, President Gregg. It was really exciting. We've had a lot of fun things continuing to happen. Allison will tell us about more fun stuff that's happening in our district. But the board was invited to the Patton Walk to School Day, and it was a really fun event. I say we start every morning, high-fiving kids into our schools. They did a fantastic job. The traffic team at Patton, kudos to them. And there were elected state officials, Representative Mary Beth Kent, he was there, a police team, a chief of police, and the celebrities of the Hershey soccer team stars. They were the real celebrities. They were there. And the kids were just so cute, like, high-fiving as they run into the tunnel. And then we followed Brian Kay, our superintendent, into this tunnel as well. It was just a really fun, special morning, so kudos to the Patton team.
Thank you, Anisha, and thanks for representing the board at that event. We appreciate it. Any other updates? Okay, well, seeing none, we're going to move to AdRed. And Kevin, I think you promised us an update last month, so.
The update will actually be coming at the next meeting because on Friday, October 18th, I will be attending the annual kickoff luncheon for AdRed. So I'll have more to share after that event.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Stacy, anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, then, our IASB report, and Anisha, please.
Thank you. For IASB, we, as a board, you know, always attend the different events, the different -- and this time, a couple of weeks ago, we had the North Cook Division Legislative Meeting, and board members attended that event. And actually, we were really surprised. It was a random drawing, and we got awarded a certificate of appreciation. And so when they called out District 25, we were really excited and then wondered what we did to get that. So we showed up. That's what we did to get there. So that was exciting to get our name called out and the recognition there. The event was really informative. There was Senator Johnson was there, Senator Laura Fine, Representative Mary Beth Kent, Representative Tracy Katzmull, and Michelle Musman. Representative Michelle Musman was there as well. And so it was interesting for us to hear the different issues that our legislators are advocating on our behalf for. A couple that stood out to me, where they talked about the teacher shortage, they talked about paid student teaching and advocating for that. I personally am very excited about that. And it's, you know, the importance of doing that in order to retain teachers and address the teacher shortage across the state of Illinois and across our country. Actually, there was conversation about unfunded mandates. There were questions for, you know, we know that we're ahead of the game. We have full-day kindergarten in District 25, but it is mandates across the state of Illinois. So that is an example of an unfunded mandate, so that there were some questions about that. I love what Senator Johnson said. She talked about, in talking about budget and different things, you'd like this, Stacy, talking about how our budget is a reflection of our values, which is, we take seriously here in District 25, really thinking about what is our strategic plan, what is our vision, mission, values, and where are we allocating our funds to. And we're very cognizant about that here in District 25. So an informative meeting, and a kudos to District 30, who hosted us. They did a really nice job hosting all the North Cook Division at that meeting. So an informative evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Anisha. All right, and Liz, we'll turn to you next to hear about NSSEO.
Yes, thank you. So we do have a visual from NSSEO in your agenda, a little map. This is a bit of a sneak preview because I actually have this meeting tomorrow night. So at this point, I'd like to provide the board members a quick update on where NSSEO is with their strategic planning process. You have been provided a timeline of the process, which is in your notes. And later this month, NSSEO will be provided with the environmental scan by their consultants Hazard, Young, and Atia. As a reminder, the environmental scan is the report that is developed from all the data that has been gathered from interviews, focus groups, an online survey, and other internal data sources, and provides the perspective of the state of NSSEO, which will serve as a starting place for the writing of the plan in December. Each of the eight-member districts will be represented and have a hand in authoring the plan, along with various administrators and staff from NSSEO. The environmental scan presentation will occur at the NSSEO Governing Board meeting on November 6th at 7:00 p.m. Board members are welcome to view the presentation at a link that I will share with Brian to share out with us. And following the meeting, I can provide a link to the recorded meeting at your request. Member districts will be providing three representatives to the meeting selected by our superintendent to write the NSSEO strategic plan. These meetings will occur on December 3rd and December 10th from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you for your representing us through that process. All right. So now we move to the community input section of our agenda. So if a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you please complete one of the blue forms provided on the table just outside the door and have the card to Lana O'Brien. And we ask that you please note on the card if you would like to speak now at the first community input, or if later, should we have a second one later in the meeting. So Lana, do we have any blue slips? Okay. Since we have no blue slips, we'll go right on to the communications from district partners. There's no report this month from the PTA Council. So Gina, we'll go to you for the ABC 25 report, please.
Okay. I just have a couple really quick things. My friend, Ms. Allison, we've got the grants open. Some grants have started to come in. Hooray, if you could please remind everybody. And Dr. Kay, if you would support putting something back out to the principals. I've sent a couple of notes, and I know there's more communication going out. But we have one, I think we have about two weeks left on collecting the grants, and then we will be busy reading and grading with the rubric that's posted online. And then we will announce all of the funding for this year. In addition, I'm going to thank all of the volunteers in advance because the reading of the grants is a big undertaking, and it's a very exciting, yet very difficult, time for all of us because we get really, really busy and we go heads down. Once we come out of that heads-down event, we will move right into planning the fun fair, which this year will be a winter fun fair, and it will be held indoors again at South Middle School. So that is the plan, and we are shooting for February. More to come.
Thank you, Gina. And before we invite Allison, you can come on up this way, but I just wanted to say thank you to Gina, and Liz, and Anisha, and Kevin, like, every month for these updates and representing the board. We all have extra, you know, things we do on the board, but I appreciate you bringing that back and keeping us informed about what's happening in those different areas of our district. So, welcome, Allison.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to showcase some awesome events happening around the district. So here's some news from the schools. We have South's Fall Variety Show this year. It's October 25th and 26th with the theme Nightmare on South Street. The eighth-grade MC Committee chose the theme and has written a creative plot line to tie everything together, including skits and 17 talented acts, supported by their tech, a student tech crew. Tickets are $5 a person and can be purchased on the South Theater website, so check it out. That is their poster. Also from South, the South Debate Team is hosting their area's IESA State Speech Contest this year. Ten schools will be participating with hundreds of students competing for division rankings. This event is open to the public from 7:45 until 11:45 a.m. Saturday, November 9th. Tickets are $3 for adults and high school students, $2 for K-8 students and seniors. So check that out as well. I love this report always. The South Middle School students and Thomas Middle School student councils hosted the third annual Lemons of Love lemonade stands across Arlington Heights. So here are some fun pictures from their event. I actually am not sure how much money they raised this year, but I will find out and report that on the next time I'm here. Here's another fun one. In Senora Fortunatos Spanish classes, they started their special-person interviews. I actually said it in Spanish, and I took it out because I was afraid I was going to mess it up in Spanish. But each week, a different student is selected to be their persona especial and gets interviewed by the class in Spanish. During the interview process, the rest of the class is engaged with tasks such as quiz writer, artist, timer, counter. This activity has helped students to begin to discuss topics in Spanish such as name, age, birthday, family, likes and dislikes, personality, and much more. It's a great way to learn about peers in the target language and cultivating a welcoming class community. So this is for Emily's, and here's another one. I mean, if you can read Spanish, awesome. Takes me back, right? And here's another one from her class. She actually sent me the whole slideshow, so I've got everybody in class. It's pretty cool. At Ivy Hill, the PTA organized a visit from the American Indian Education Society in Chicago in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was Monday, which will be Monday, October 14th. It was an assembly filled with music, history, dance, and the kids really enjoyed it. And here's a few pictures from that. Third graders at Greenbrier have been practicing map skills. Here's a couple of pictures from them. They used a compass rose and their cardinal directions to find treasure on a map. Here's a couple more with them hard at work. One more, I think. There they are. At Westgate, students are being recognized as West Great. Students are working hard on being safe, ready, and mindful. Here's a picture of those guys. They receive a West Great ticket when they are caught showing the expectations. Six names are pulled each week, and students get a certificate and a prize from Dr. Buck and Mrs. Giacomo Ferris. Goals are created monthly for a whole-school incentive, and they have already reached their first goal and celebrated with a board game day. And there's a special shout-out to those Wolverines right there. Nope. I had a last-minute. Dryden has an LMC challenge for third to fifth graders, and so there was a close-up. I added it after I sent this in, so the pictures didn't make it. But a shout-out to Dryden for their awesome job at the LMC. This is a picture of fourth graders at Windsor. They made river tables to see what different variables do to the shape of a river and how it affects the landscape. It was a super fun, hands-on, and very dirty experiment, which is, of course, the best kind of experiment to do at school. And that's a picture of our mud over at Windsor. So as always, I appreciate the time to shine the spotlight on the awesome things teachers are doing around the district to engage our students. I look forward to reporting next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We're now going to the consent agenda. This is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report. B, invoices. C, treasurer's report. D, regular and closed-session meeting minutes of September 24th, 2024.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
Second?
Thank you, Anisha. If you'd please call the vote.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olanichak?
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. Our next item of business is in the Business and Finance section of the agenda, and we have an action item for the 2025 benefits renewal. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the continuing of various insurance coverages for the 2025 calendar year.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Anisha. And so Stacy, if you could walk us through the benefits renewal.
Sure. Thank you. So the Insurance Committee had our initial renewal meeting on September 5th with some additional communications and meetings the following week. Similar to other organizations, our plans are impacted by the cost drivers in the healthcare trends out in the world, including supply and labor shortages in the health sector, medical inflation, new treatments, gene therapies and technologies, and specialty drugs, including the GLP-1s we hear a lot about on TV. In reviewing our benefits and where our claim dollars go, we considered a number of options to try to minimize the impact on premiums. Recall that the Board has a negotiated maximum increase on the employer's share of the premium of 6%. So the balance of any increase in the premiums goes to the employee. Originally, we were facing a fairly significant increase in the employee premium, basically double the single premium, and about a 30% increase in the family premium for the employee share. So based on that, we are recommending the following changes to the healthcare plan, changing our prescription drug copays from the current $10 for generic, $40 for preferred brands, and I don't have this written right. It's 10, 35, 40 right now, but we're changing it to 20% of the cost, up to $40 for the preferred brands, 20% of the cost up to $100 for non-preferred brands, and 20% of the cost to $150 maximum for specialty drugs. We are finding that specialty drugs are a large driver of our healthcare costs, so this helps shift a portion of that impact onto the users of that. The out-of-pocket maximums for RX will remain the same, though, at 3,000 individual, 6,000 family. We're recommending adding the Blue Choice Options PPO Network to the high-deductible plan so that it matches a regular PPO plan. The majority of providers in this area are in both networks anyway, so it would just be those random, independent providers that might end up in the Tier Two cost, but again, aligns it with our current PPO plan. And then increasing the emergency room copay for everyone from the current $75 to $300, which is more in line with what a typical plan these days are. You have a copy of the rates and noting that the board's premium will go up to 6% in most cases. No change in the dental plan and a minimal change in the premium, I think 24 cents per check. And then our basic life AD&amp;D and voluntary life policies are under contract until January 1st of '26, and then our vision insurance is already under contract until January 1st of '27. We're also changing our online benefits enrollment software from our current B-Swift software to a program called Solarix due to our declining satisfaction with the B-Swift service. Solarix will allow us to offer additional voluntary benefits to our staff and, at the same time, be less expensive than our current software program.
All right. Thank you, Stacy, for sharing that information, walking us through it. Any questions from the board? Okay. So without any questions, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olanichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
All right. Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. The next section of our agenda is personnel and planning, and this is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the memorandum.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second?
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And welcome, Ms. Perry. And if you could share the information regarding the MOU.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a memorandum of understanding MOU between the Arlington Teachers Association and the Board of Education, which seeks to clarify the implementation of two split positions. These positions will allow staff members to serve as both part-time teachers and part-time administrators. The plan leverages the skills and experiences of our educators, providing them with opportunities for administrative leadership in the district while also supporting certified staffing needs. Each staff member in a split position will divide their time between teaching and administrative duties. While serving as teachers, staff members will retain all rights afforded to ATA members. Conversely, when acting in their administrative capacity, they'll adhere to all administrative rules and policies. This dual compliance is clearly outlined in the MOU to prevent any conflict of interest. The MOU represents a collaborative effort between the ATA and the Board of Education to foster professional growth and improve administrative capacity. By approving the agreements made between both parties, we can enhance the quality of education and administration within our district, benefiting both our staff and students. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that information. Looking to the board now, any questions for Kendra? Okay, seeing none. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olanichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. And we're now at the Superintendent Report section of the agenda, and our first item, as it is every month, is the Freedom of Information Act report. So Dr. Kay, could you review those for us?
I could. As you will see in the report, there was one Freedom of Information request that has been responded to under the guidelines. Our last board meeting was not too long ago, which is why the board meeting feels a little bit quicker and shorter. But there was only one request which was responded to in time. So that is all I have on the FOIA topic.
Okay. And our next item on the agenda was listed as an action item tonight. We're actually, it will be an information item only, and it's regarding the data sharing agreement with District 214. And again, I'll turn to you, Dr. Kay, for the details.
Yeah, I was hoping to have the final version in your hands in time for you to review any changes, but unfortunately, I got the final version this morning, so I didn't feel like it was appropriate to have you vote on it, having very little to no time to review it. So there were just a couple more changes we were making, such as ensuring that there is no end date to the agreement, that if we wanted to get out of it, we just need to give a 30-day notice. So we just wanted to be consistent for all of the feeder schools. So it's taking a little bit more time than we anticipated just because there's so many more eyes on it from all of the feeder districts. So I would anticipate coming back in the next meeting as I expected to this evening to get a vote on the data sharing agreement. The other content of the actual items we're going to share has not changed. It's more just protecting the information that we do share to ensure that we are all in agreement before we have the board sign it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kay. Now we'll go to our first reading of policies from Press 116. And so, Dr. Kay, if you could take us through these policies.
Yeah, for Press 116, we met as a policy committee before the last board meeting, and we had five policies, which, again, felt like way too few. Typically, we have a larger number. And the outcome of the policy committee at that time was to take all five and move them forward unanimously, as written. I think the biggest change for these five is the Title IX changes that are impacting the language within. So all five, according to the policy committee, we were unanimously approving to move forward for first reading.
Okay. So, but this is, of course, the board's opportunity to ask questions before we bring them back for second. Any questions on the policies from Press 116? Okay. Well, seeing none, then we will bring them back as presented next month.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we'll move to our IASB 2024 resolutions. This is an information item for this month as a preview of what will happen in November, but I'll turn to you, Dr. Kay, to outline the process.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And Anisha, too.
And we'll kick it off to some others to talk about it or ask some questions. So this fourth and final topic I have is from the Illinois Association of School Boards, the 2024 Resolutions. The Annual Delegate Assembly is the meeting where school board members vote on the proposals submitted by local school boards. Each school board that is a member of the association is entitled to one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly. So that comes up at our IIII conference. Every member school board should select one individual member to serve as its delegates, as we have in the past. So I would anticipate we will nominate someone on this board to serve as our delegate at that assembly. And again, in looking at the total number of resolutions that are being considered, it feels much smaller than it has in the past. So if you wanted to take a look at what is at your table, there are six resolutions that the committee is recommending do adopt. That's at the top portion of this handout. And at the bottom portion of the handout, there are Resolutions 7, 8, 9, and 10, which we want to give our delegate, whomever that is, authority to vote on our behalf for these topics, but they won't be on the floor to vote on unless these member districts that presented it try to appeal. So if they are appealed at the Delegate Assembly, we need our delegate to be prepared to vote on them. So the ones 7A, 7B, through 10A and 10B, whoever our delegate is, needs to be aware of what the board feels we would do if we had to vote on them. But currently, they would not be up for vote. And then there is one constitutional amendment that is also being looked at for vote. And so a total of six from the first page that we need to make sure our delegate has an awareness of how we want to vote. And then one constitutional amendment for parliamentary practice. And then, as much as I'd like to avoid the ones that say "do not adopt," we also need to give them guidance on those. I've read all of them, so if there's questions about some of the reasons why, it is in your packet as to the rationale as to why the committee chose these to move forward. So I think we need to talk about what's the format that we want to give our delegate and how do we want to select our delegate, which doesn't need to be tonight, per se. It would be at the November 12th meeting.
Did you want to, Anisha, would you like to jump in at this moment, or I'm ready to?
Yeah, sure. I'll just give a couple of points. No, thank you for that, Dr. Kay. Prior to the conference on Thursday, October 31st, at noon, I'll be joining the ISB Government Relations Team to learn more about the Delegate Assembly process even further. And so at the next meeting, I can even answer questions for our board and about the voting and the proposed resolutions and to get our questions answered. So if you individually have questions and want to send them to me or Dr. Kay, we can make sure that, you know, I can make sure that I ask those questions on behalf of our board at that Thursday, October 31st, meeting with the Government Relations Team. I also met with Alva Cuteres, who's the North Cook Division Chair, yesterday, and we talked, you know, had met about other things, but she told me about how the reason why it's so much cleaner, that the ISB and North Cook Division and some good people, Anna, who has worked on resolutions, that whole team has worked really tirelessly and hard to make sure they clean up this process for us. That's why it's, from where we came a couple of years ago to where we are now, we have a much cleaner process, and they're continuing to think about that. So, yep, that's the Delegate Assembly in a nutshell.
So let's talk for a minute about what we'd like our board colleagues to do. So you have this paper form. You also have an electronic version in board docs, whichever way you're comfortable. You're just marking your preferences on the form. Go right down the line and yes or no to all the items. And then we want to give that to Anisha at the very latest, when you arrive to the --
And then we want to give that to Anisha at the very latest, when you arrive to the November meeting, but if you could, I know she would appreciate it if you could send them ahead of the meeting. And then a part of our discussion in November will be the tally that she has, and then if there are questions and further discussion to be had on those resolutions. Does that work for you, Anisha?
That'd be great and be good, because I'll tally it up, and Lana's always great about double-checking my tally, so we'll go in with the correct tally to the ISB Delegate Assembly.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Just so that we don't go through the rigmarole that we've had in years past, on the second bottom section, you actually have two choices to make for each one. So you either have, just draw yourself another row of yeses and another row of no's, because your first row of yes or no's is whether or not you want it to be considered again. And then your second set of yes and no's would be your thought on it. So conceptually, you can say, yes, I would like cellphone usage to be moved up to the consent agenda, but you could also then say, I don't want it. Your response would be a yes and a no for that one. Or it could be two yeses, or it could be two no's. But just so we don't go through that rigmarole and...
Yes. Yes, no, thank you. As always, it's been quite a journey over the years, right? And so any clarification is appreciated, yes. And ultimately, our district, out of all the districts here, only gets one vote, not seven votes. So it does distill down, or 21. Fair enough. Anisha, did you have additional, excuse me, an additional comment?
I was trying to remember, because I believe they cleaned that up now, Rich. So whereas before we were like, they said yes, and are we saying yes to their yes? Now it's a little bit more cleaner, where we're saying, yes, I want do language, no, I don't want do language.
No, I'm talking about the second section.
Oh, the second section, got it.
This one is easy.
Yeah, yeah, the do not.
The second one.
Okay, got it. Okay, okay.
You guys get your two questions for each item.
Yes, you're right about that. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications?
Mr. Bryant?
I mean, typically, this, you know, I would assume this is done, but I just say it out loud, like, so if any of these, if the district, be that holistically from the admin or what have you, if there's any, you know, yeah, if there's, if we have any, you know, awarenesses or, you know, interests that might conflict with any of these, you know, just kind of highlight those. You know, like, when I was looking at the cellphone usage one, for example, you know, I could grab, oh, you could grab, oh, do we have any interest in ever having a, the power to, if I read this correctly, have a district-wide cellphone policy, right? That's essentially what this is saying.
This is actually saying they want a statewide policy. So if you, when you have a moment to review the rationale as to why this was moved down to do not adopt, it's because they feel like we already have the authority locally to make that decision through Board policy.
Okay. That's kind of the clarification I wanted.
But there are states that have done a statewide policy, and that's what this was trying to do.
Okay.
But the Resolutions Committee felt like we're not ready to do a full statewide, because the authority already exists at the local level for that to happen.
Okay. That's the context I was looking for.
And the, like, the 9A Fates Law.
Right.
Like, Fates Law is something we're already doing. You'll notice Fates Law is also, there's a separate portion that is under the do adopt. It's looking to centralize so that District 15, District 54, District 25 doesn't have to do it. Once it's done for one person, we can all go to the centralized spot and just go, look, if we're looking to hire this person, have they already had that background check done for EHR? Down below at the bottom, it's a request to do the EHR Employment History Review for current employees. They felt like the Resolutions Committee stated in their summary that they didn't feel like they would be able to do that for current employees because of bargaining agreements that are in place and whatnot. So they like the idea of a centralized agency to manage it. They didn't like the idea of making every current employee have to go through it.
Right.
Because it was put in place January 1st, or sorry, July 1st of last year for every new employee, not for current. So I appreciate the effort to try and make sure every current employee has to do it, but the Resolutions Committee didn't feel like it was appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, please, Stacy.
One more, sorry. Not necessarily now, but the whole do not present piece. Like, we don't vote on that, yet they're telling us that...
If the district that brought the cellphone usage resolution to the table isn't satisfied with the outcome that it's a do not adopt, they can appeal it.
Right.
And if they appeal it at the delegate assembly, and then people want to actually, it becomes something that we now vote on, we need to guide our delegates on how we should respond.
Right, right, which we've dealt with in the past.
Yeah.
But the resolution's not eligible for appeal. There's three of them listed that say do not present, like, I don't remember seeing that in the past. What's your, and it doesn't have to be now.
It's not in the copies we have.
No, it's in the, it's in the PDF. So I'm like, okay, if they're do not present, we don't vote on that, so it's like an informational one? I don't know. I'm confused a little bit, so.
Just a little synopsis?
Well, yeah, like, if I can't vote on whether or not it gets presented, why am I giving the page in the, you know, in the context of mail-in voting and blah, blah, blah?
Do you have comment?
A little bit, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, please.
So of the three, the first one, the constructional change for mail-in voting, the committee determined that the proposal is a proposed constitutional amendment, not a resolution. So they felt like it was just given to the wrong...
Oh, okay.
Path.
Okay.
They weren't saying that it's not appropriate.
Gotcha.
They just felt like it should have been a resolution and not a constitutional amendment. That was the first one.
Okay.
And then the finance section, same.
Same, that's what I thought.
It was the same. And then the Fates Law, the CANTS, they felt like it was too burdensome for the statewide centralized solution. So CANTS was an option. Instead of doing Fates Law, CANTS is through the DCFS organization, so I can submit my own name as like a new employee through the CANTS. It takes a little bit longer to get the response, but DCFS does their own background check to ensure that Brian K. is safe, and then they send us the results. It's just not quick. So they were asking, can we forego Fates Law and just do the CANTS and replace? And they didn't feel like that was appropriate.
But the reason they're do not present, I think you kind of addressed it before, because they wouldn't be...
Constitutional amendments, they'd be resolutions.
Constitutional amendments, they'd be resolutions.
Yeah.
Stacy, did you have a comment?
Just to suggest, from a financial perspective, the EBF authorized charter school funding resolution doesn't currently impact District 25, because we don't have any church schools in the district, but my anticipation would be that a public school district wouldn't be recommending it and supporting it if it was going to be costing them additional funds toward that school, a lot of their own funding formula. So I would think that we would support that, should that become the case here. And then with tax increment financing, I would absolutely support that one, because right now, while I do participate on a joint review board with the Village for Tips, we actually don't have any authority. The Village can actually make decisions irregardless of what the joint review board says. So this resolution is saying, you know, should there be, should we support stronger, give the joint review board actual authority to approve or disapprove? So I would think that is in our best interest.
That was number three, right, Stacy? Correct, yes. So a yes, that you would recommend a yes. Okay. Mr. President, I have a process, just a confirmation.
Please.
I wonder, I'm asking my Board colleagues, do you think at this meeting that we go through each one, or do you think we're okay on our own to read through it, and then by November 1st, because our next board meeting is November 12th, by November 1st to individually send me the tallies, so that they're tallied up? And then at that board meeting, November 12th, I just say, this is how our Board majority votes for this. Does that sound good for a process? And if there's any, or does it make more sense to come back and talk about each one and then vote? So what, I wanted to kind of hear the will of the Board and...
Before you jump in, Brian, I would, I'd like to suggest that maybe restart the way you first suggested, like, we're talking about, we'll give you, send you ours ahead of time. And my thought is, you could go down the line, number one, and you could tell us, here's the Board's, where the Board is at. And if we had a significant discussion, we could maybe repoll the Board. Because maybe, you know, you won't know individually, and I don't think we want to know, when you report out who voted what, but if it looks like there was enough discussion, we can say, all right, well, let's just do another, and we can have extra sheets here and just do another quick tally, and might be the same or not. How does that?
Yeah, I pretty much, I was going to say that, you know, the only benefit to having the tally before the meeting would be just that, like, you know, we don't really have to discuss it now, but if there's any, whatever, outliers or...
Yeah. Or someone had a significant thing they wanted to bring up about it.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of open no matter what, but the tally's going to tell you whether or not there was, whether, you know, if we didn't, you know, maybe there's only a couple that aren't even outliers, or just weren't a majority on it. You can share that. If anybody wants to, you know, speak up, they're going to know that they're one of the minority or whatever, you know, we do it that way.
Yeah.
So that way, we'll know. I mean, if we all hand them in and we're unanimous and we're all in support, we still might have some discussion, but we'll kind of go into that with the, you know, forethought of kind of knowing where we're collectively sit as a Board.
No, thanks, Brian and Greg. And I really appreciate Dr. K. kind of, you know, going through some of these already, and seems like if we had questions, to go to Dr. K., or, you know, I'll have more information later on, too. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I clarified earlier, all ours, our thinking on it distills down to one vote on each. But then also, what, each resolution just guides the advocacy of IASB. It doesn't mean it becomes law in the state. Just a reminder about the layers of, that happened between us, our discussion, and then IASB. So any other questions, clarifications? I would just add something interesting. I didn't know that the polling place resolution that is being considered is a couple districts that don't have schools being used as polling places, yet they have to follow the law in Illinois to have the day off.
Oh.
So it still provides their entire community and their employees time to go vote, but because they're not polling places, they didn't want to be forced into taking the day off. So that is the purpose behind that topic. If you don't have schools as polling places, do we have to take the day off?
Thank you. All right. And thank you, everyone, for that discussion, and we'll bring it back in November.
And then I'll get an individual email on November 1st, and if I don't, I will ping you, so I get your votes, okay? So I think November 1st will be an easy date to remember. Thanks.
Thank you, Anisha. We are at the second Community Input section of the agenda. Lana, do we have any blue slips at this time? We do not. So now, we go to our future agenda items, and this is where I ask if there are any new topics from the Board that have been discussed with Dr. K.
So I forgot to preview. At the last meeting, I had anticipated bringing to you a information item for the third-party independent audit. I didn't want you to think I forgot about it. Just between the last meeting and this one, I didn't feel like I had it completely ready to present. So again, it'll be an information item, third-party independent audit of our policies. So I will bring that, I anticipate for November 12th.
Great. Thank you, Dr. K. Any others? And, very good. So the Board will not go back into closed session, so could I have a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anisha. Lana, if you please, call the roll.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
All right. The motion passes seven zero. The meeting is adjourned, and thank you, everyone, for a brisk meeting. Have a good evening.